I can hear you yet.
What do you think about the selection?
Not bad. I liked our draft. That was a need. We needed a safety.
Did you get squirted way down there? Debbie May from your mother's stuff?
Have fun with it.
No, no, it's okay.
I think it's kinda crazy because tax code, if you try to go taxing about that, it makes sense.
That first year.
It's like wiping before you. I don't have my mark on all of this.
Don't be surprised by that.
Where's Larry at? This is what he needs to watch late night when he can't sleep. Pick up some good clips from ya.
Yeah. Oh, I've got a bunch of them. Believe me, a lot worse than that. I've got one I've thought of many a times. I thought, uh, no. A little better judgment those days. One of these days is not gonna happen. I'm not saying it's not today either. We start at nine or nine thirty today.
Well, Mark's here.
Well, we had one that started late the other day, didn't we?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that was potentially.
Oh, that's fine.
John, is Greg coming?
Uh, he'll be here later. He will be here for the lease, the vehicle lease. Actually, he can train right now. I have to come back tonight. I do. I'm smarter than all.
Steamy.
Steamy in here.
Steamy.
It was like that yesterday. It was like.
Doesn't feel like the air conditioner's running.
Blowing cold air.
Feels like it's just a fan running, doesn't it?
Yeah, we turned it off trying to save money.
Can you see what it said out there?
Seventy.
It was like that yesterday, so I got the fan just to get air.
Cam's gone, didn't he? To our vacation?
Well, who are we supposed to call and place it? Tell them to go check that because it may have closed that up again. What it does is it freezes it up once in a while.
So they remind me of camping.
It's miserable in there.
Camping?
You know, on a tent and you wake up and it's all.
Tent? How old are you? Still sleeping in a tent?
All right.
I graduated from that.
I'm gonna pull a plug on this discussion. Right now, I'll call the commissioner to order. Do we have any minister reports?
No. Sorry.
All right. Commissioner Committee Liaison reports an announcement of upcoming meetings and/or events.
Leadership Friday?
Leadership Friday.
You going?
Uh, yes, I will be there.
Okay.
Cole County Communities tomorrow.
It is?
No.
No? Oh, next week. My bad. Sorry. My bad. Looking at too many darn things on my calendar.
Got MMRPC board meeting today, five in Ashland.
Is that the Tac?
No, Tac's at three thirty.
Oh, those are the same day?
Yeah.
Okay. You're going to the one and then Larry goes to Tac, so we got somebody above?
Yes.
The, uh, I have the ED Executive Team meeting at the Chamber Monday morning at seven AM. And follow up to our discussions with them about reestablishing some more direct contact. Sheriff's barbecue is Tuesday. Sure John has tickets?
Of course.
And I think that's everything I've got. All right. First item on the agenda is appointment to the Cole County Planning Commission of, excuse me, Kathy Hennessy.
So move. Couple of appointments by commission.
Yep. Second?
My motion's second. Call roll, please.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Mark?
Yes. By roll, call, vote, Kathy Hennessy is appointed to the Cole County Planning Commission. Send a resolution, please. All right. Next item on the agen- agenda, bleh. Abatements and penalties on real estate taxes for 2013. Larry?
I think you all have a copy of a letter from Sharon Fennelwald, who wanted, uh, wanted us to debate the penalties and interest on her father's, uh, real estate taxes. He had passed away. Uh, the tax bill actually went to the daughter's house. Uh, she says she never got it. However, they did pay the father's personal property tax.
They went to the same house?
Well, I don't think it went to the same house or his residence, but obviously they knew the taxes were due because they paid the personal property. They paid all their property taxes. They were asking for forgiveness of the penalties and interest, which, uh, of course, the collector's office doesn't have the authority to, uh, waive the penalties and interest unless it's an error on the part of the county or the postal service. And there's no indication that there was an error on the county's part or the postal service's part. So she sent a letter, uh, requesting that the commission amend taxes, the penalties and interest on the taxes.
How much is the penalties? Or how much are the penalty? How much is the late fee?
Uh, I did bring that with me, to be honest with you.
We are finally gonna be honest with you.
Just kidding, Larry.
Well, I normally find that it's better to lie to you than to tell you the truth, so.
I'm not married to you. Where else are you gonna go with this?
I'm just gonna keep my mouth shut.
That's kinda what I was curious, how much it was, how much it's worth fighting over and.
Well, I don't.
I don't think that'd be willing to waive the penalties, but the late fee might be one or the other.
Well, it's the same.
Has she paid it?
One and the same.
Yes, it's been paid.
She's paid everything but the.
No, she's paid everything. She's wanting us to reimburse them.
Okay, so it's not one for paying late and then it's a fee that goes up each month that it's late or a penalty for paying late. It's.
Well, you can't waive one. It's their, it's combined penalties and interest, even though they're calculated as separate amounts, it's, you can't separate them out. By statute.
Then it's really just interest. Or is it just penalty?
I move that we leave the fees in place.
I'll second for discussion.
Most people pay, if they're paying late, they pay the penalties and interest. They don't ask for it to be waived.
I just think we set a bad precedence if we keep. Keep waiving penalties and, and interest, so.
I don't disagree because, I mean, as much doubt as I have in the US Postal Service is a general statement. Two mail, I mean, she's claiming she didn't get two of the mailings. If the ad, if you've confirmed the address is correct in the book, I mean, it makes it pretty hard for me to believe that she didn't get one of the two. So that, that strikes me as much more likely that they just misplaced it as opposed to the mail actually failed to deliver.
One was mailed to his house and one was mailed to her house.
No?
Yeah.
Said the mail was forwarded.
Personal property tax was mailed to his home address.
His home address, which they went and picked up.
No, I'm talking, okay. So her letter says, um, her letter says that they didn't get the initial statement nor the first late notice. It's in her letter, not in the memo. Well, it's the second delinquent notice.
We sent out a, a delinquent notice.
So what's the first delinquent notice?
That's what she got. It probably says second notice on it.
Oh, okay. Second notice.
But it's not the second delinquent notice. We sent out the tax bill in November. We sent out a delinquent notice in April.
Do they say it on the envelope?
Yes.
I was thinking that. I've seen that before. Thanks for the reminders, by the way.
I mean, this.
It looks something.
This is obviously on a second property. I mean, she knew that there was personal property due and, and there was real estate property due and, you know, she, she just failed to make sure she had it all in place. I mean, you know what's due, whether you get, whether you get the bill or not.
I agree.
You have to, you have to take some responsibility.
And that's what the statutes actually say. If you don't receive a bill, you're still responsible for paying it by December 31st.
Well, if they were up here to argue it or try to clarify, it'd be a different story too possibly, so I'm going to call.
All right. Uh, so your motion is to leave the penalties stand.
Leave the fees in place, yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Fees stay in place.
Thank you. Thanks, Larry.
Thanks, Larry.
Thanks for being honest.
All right. Um, do you wanna do your, you have folks here that maybe.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Irwin's.
Let's, let's do our discussion of livestock with Westview residents since you all, folks, taking time to come up and we appreciate that. He said it would be, he'd be here at nine. That's what the email he sent me was. Can you text him and tell him to come over?
Can you wait just a few minutes, Bruce?
Yeah, just take a couple minutes. We'll plow through some of this stuff. Wheeler, you're staying the whole duration because you want me to sign like 10,000 signatures. Signing of leased vehicles for sheriff's department. All right, John. What do we gotta do here?
There's a, I'm gonna let Jared talk to you. There's a, we just need to sign the leases. You guys have already approved the lease program that we have. There was one change to it. Instead of going with Ally, we're going with Central Bank as the, uh, as the person that's funding these. And I'll let Jared discuss that.
If you got Central Bank involved, you gotta recuse.
Is this Central Bank?
That's one of the changes.
Can you just give us a brief explanation in the, uh.
Who do you want, Betty?
In the microphone here.
Who do you want? Yeah, who do you want? Yeah, who do you want? I have a conflict of interest. My, I, I have a conflict of interest with Central Bank.
Okay, sure.
I cannot participate in this discussion, decision, or discussion whatsoever, so I'm gonna step out.
I have an account there.
So. That's fine. We'll cross through that and.
Do you want a quick description of what we're doing?
Well, yeah, I just, uh, just a brief explanation of, of what the program is. I mean, Wheeler's kinda gone over some of that stuff and we're familiar with it.
We're doing three-year contracts with Central Bank, uh, single-pay, um, purchases. Basically, everything's paid upfront.
Okay.
Um, we're figuring over 36 months of, I forget what exactly what the payments are, but it figures out to be roughly $14,304 or something like that per vehicle. We're doing a total of eight vehicles. We've only got three that have been delivered. The next five should be here in the next couple of weeks. The payments are made now, I guess upfront, on those vehicles, and then after three years, they turn the vehicles back into Riley Chevrolet. So that's the overview of it. Um, there's a residual value of each one of these vehicles of 24,000 some odd dollars. That Riley Chevrolet assumes that liability at the end of the lease or at the end of the term, I guess I should say.
So is that residual 24,000, is that an option that we have to purchase the vehicle?
Yeah, absolutely. And it's in there and it's part of that. You do have the option to purchase it at that price at that time.
Okay.
So the only other stipulation that's in there is the mileage limitations are 15,000 miles per year.
Okay.
Anything over 15,000 miles a year is 25 cents per mile.
Okay.
So everything's addressed in that and was part of that.
Only other question that I would have, I mean, I assume that we're, we carry all the insurance on there.
Right.
And so.
It's just like a, a regular, um, you have all the, you have all the ownership liabilities of it. So, I mean, that's, it's titled in Cole County Sheriff's Department. It's, everything's there. There's, uh.
So if a vehicle gets totaled or whatever.
Then that would be your liability, um, and then we still, I mean, everything's paid upfront.
And then we could start a new lease or how, how's that gonna work?
Well, we have to order the vehicles. I mean, because we ordered these to be specific, so we'd have to get back down to making sure we can get that same vehicle. But yeah, I mean, then we would just go back into it. We'd have to start over with a new one because a total loss would eliminate that contract essentially.
Because that vehicle wouldn't be. But with us paying a lump sum upfront for three years, I mean, would, would you guys credit some of that back towards a new lease or how would that work?
It would all be based on what the value of the vehicle is.
Okay.
So you have to imagine that the value of the vehicle would be $30,000 and it was $24,000 as the residual, then you would get a credit of $6,000.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we would get a credit back because.
Right. Whatever the value of the vehicle's worth is what you're. Right, right.
Okay. Jeff, you got anything?
15,000 miles enough? Okay. We talked about it before. I didn't remember what the miles were, so I was fine with it before. I'm not a big lease person, but John went, took me through leasing one-on-one and.
And, and truthfully, I mean, this is something new for us, so, and, uh, you know, hopefully it works out. All the numbers, it should work, so we'll just have to wait and see.
Try it out.
The bid itself was with a land that grew, going to Central.
Was with Ally.
Ally.
Uh, the reason that they switched up on us is because, um, their leasing structure didn't allow for patrol vehicles is how it came out. When we had our rep, we actually talked to our rep and Mike Riley was the one who was, um, in contact with them. They said that, yeah, no problem, no issues whatsoever. And then, um, I guess when they, we had to get, um, some financial statements from the county. They sent that up, um, and once it went to, they had to do a, uh, line of credit, right? Oh, you did that? Okay. So whenever they did that line of credit though, I guess is when they were saying, I guess some people in Detroit were the ones that said, well, we can't do this under this statute. So that's when we got Central Bank to step in and take care of it.
Okay, so the end payment's the same?
It's actually a little bit less than what we talked about. It's about $35 less, uh, per vehicle. So, yeah. But yeah, the end payment's the same.
Wasn't the, the low bidder, it was Riley and, and through, I mean, you guys secured the financing or whatever for the, for the lease. So, I mean, Joe, you don't see any problem with that, do you?
I was gonna say, I just might add that part of the agreement is around three years of scheduling.
Okay. And what, what all does that include besides oil changes?
Tire rotations, air opens, anything that's required.
They do a multi-point vehicle inspection on it too, but anything that's found past those, um, things that, that aren't under warranty would still be up to you. So, like if it needs tires or something like that, that would be.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope. I'll make a motion. We signed the leasing agreement papers.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Call roll, Betty.
Yes.
Yes.
Mark?
Hey. Does she wanna sign all that stuff now?
Uh.
Cause there's gonna be about 15 minutes, probably 20 minutes worth of signing, I would bet, to get through all three of these. I can come back later. You guys can sign later. Whatever works for you.
It doesn't matter.
Who signs it? You do.
Yeah, I'll have to sign it, yeah.
She may be writing while he's gone. The new guy.
We got all this to sign. It's all right.
I don't like my.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. Yeah, yeah, that's fine. And, uh, the clerk will have to, to sign it too. They'll have to notarize it.
Okay, so do you want me just to come back after a while?
But, but I'm not gonna sign it right now, so.
I'd say let's keep plowing through this stuff and sign a letter.
Yeah, yeah, if you could, that'd be fine. That way I might have to scratch through some of that for, or you've got Mark on here too.
Yeah, do you want me to, uh, just meet you?
Uh, I can, I can call you or whatever after I get them signed and then the clerk can sign them, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jared. Thanks, Jim.
Jeff, good to see you.
Yep.
Chris, good to see you.
Appreciate it.
Golfing this weekend? Friday's tournament, Saturday's tournament.
Okay.
The what? No.
So it's Sunday.
Thanks for discovering that. Okay. The sheriff has arrived.
The sheriff is near.
So we'll talk about livestock in Westview Heights. Chris?
Bruce, if you'd like to, go ahead and give us your.
Well, I got a couple of things. We need to use my.
Yeah, we can hear you fine, but.
Tell me I wasn't loud.
Folks up there in TV land, you know.
First thing is disturbance of peace that I don't understand. What it says is unreasonably and knowingly disturbs or alarms other person or persons by loud noise. It, it doesn't say anywhere in there that it excludes animals and then he is creating a noxious or offensive odor. I, I've been in my house 18 years. Never had any problem gagging when I mowed my backyard until the last couple of weeks. It stinks. It smells like chickens. I don't have a huge problem with the chickens. Just to not have them there, but I'm not complaining about it. But what I am complaining about is being woke up at four, 4:15 every morning by a rooster that doesn't know when the damn sun comes up. And then obviously he's got some, some impairment because he crows all day long. It, it's not a four or five crows and then we can roll back over and go to sleep. It's all day long. And, and the ordinance, I mean, unreasonably, okay. Well, it is unreasonable because I went over and spoke to him and he told me that he's had other complaints from the neighbors. It's unreasonable because he could do something about it if he chose to. There's such a thing as, believe it or not, a no crow rooster collar. $7 online. They allow the rooster to breathe, to eat, and do everything that roosters do other than crow. It stops their neck from swelling. He could lower the roof on the coop where the rooster couldn't extend and crow. He could throw a tarp over. He's choosing not to do that, and that's unreasonable. He is knowingly doing it because we spoke to him. I've spoke to him twice. So it's almost like he just doesn't care. The, the second time I spoke to him, his comment to me was, is I moved to the county so I could do whatever I wanted. My comment back to him was, is you moved to the county, not the country. You wanna raise chickens and, and now one of the other neighbors that spoke to him says that he's building pens in his backyard and he's gonna start raising pot-bellied pigs. I don't know. I mean, it stinks. And I don't know why we should have to put up with that in Westview Heights subdivision. So my, my first comments are about Article 8, offenses against public order, and then I do think it should be disturbing the peace. But then I go to the count, to the regulations and it talks about, um.
I'm sure we have a nuisance code.
And. It talks about customary incidental uses for an accessory building. Well, what's customary? There are no other chicken coops that I know of in Westview Heights, so you can't say that that's customary. It's not customary in Westview Heights to have a rooster. You know, you go to the, where they broke up Westview Heights in the bylaws from 1999, Rules for Land Subdivision Development Construction, Cole County, Missouri, 1999, and it says an agricultural building, a structure utilized to store farm implements, hay, feed, grain, or other agricultural or horticultural products, or to house poultry. It's an agricultural structure he's got back there. We're not in the country. It's not zoned for agricultural. So, I mean, I, my, my question is, is why can one person move into a neighborhood where several of us have been there for over 15 years and disrupt the neighborhood, not to mention adversely affect our property values? If I go for sale sign in my front yard, Sheriff, and you come to look at it and you're walking around the back of my house and you get a stench of chicken crap or hear pigs wallerin', are you gonna buy my house? I'm not. I mean, I wouldn't. My wife's from New York City. She's losing her ever loving mind hearing a rooster crow at 4:30 in the morning. She thought all they were was a kingdom of packages.
Absolutely.
Just, just to address a couple of things to start with, uh, we're willing to do whatever that we can get prosecution on. Uh, the noise complaints, prosecutor's office has told me on several occasions that they, they don't do that for animals. It just doesn't, they're not gonna prosecute on animals. On, now, on the pig issue, on the pot-bellied pig issue, there's, there's two issues. One, is it a pet or is it an agricultural animal? And the prosecutor's not.
I figured he'd come anyway.
But I have asked an opinion. I haven't gotten one back in a couple of weeks yet. Now, and, and that's what I have to go with on that. The, the issue of zoning is it's not zoned. We, we don't do county zoning. Uh, if, if we would, then I would be pointing to public health and going, okay, it's, it's time for you guys to go out. But we don't have zoning. That's gonna be an option this fall on the ballot, is that correct?
August.
August. And that's the hope there. I, I live outside the city limits of Jeff City. Larry's my neighbor. We had at least two neighbors with chickens that, that crow, the roosters that crow. Um, and, and I, when I checked repeatedly, I've been told is that there is no noise disturbance by a rooster. And at 4:30 in the morning, sometimes when it wakes me up, because I get awake a lot during the night by other reasons, um, I, I resent it a little bit, uh, but lawfully, there's nothing about, I can do about that. I, I do not have the authority to do that. And I know what you're gonna look at in the statute, and I know what you're saying with the statute, but if I can't get prosecution, it doesn't matter. So I, I guess my question, firstly, I, I would say about whether it's a pet or a hog, is the old saying, you put lipstick on it, throw a prom dress on it, at the end of the day, it's still a pet. Pot bellies are also considered pets. Well. And, and I don't have that response from the prosecutor, so I don't know what it's going to be yet. Uh, my hope is, is that we can do something about the pot-bellied pig. Shy of zoning, I don't know what you can do about the rooster. And the question that, that begs itself, even if we do pet zoning, is it not grandfathered yet?
Agriculture's accepted. I mean, that's the problem here and you're setting up, I mean, the problem is they are setting up a grandfather case.
That law won't be agriculture, though.
The what?
It won't matter. If, if the existing use of a property at the time zoning goes into effect is agricultural, it cannot be taken away.
As soon as it gets rid of them, they can't bring them back.
You know, you can't bring them back once they're gone. The grandfather doesn't go that way.
And we're, we're stuck in a position on some of this stuff because in all honesty, there's things that, that I, that I don't like. If, I've had to make a decision, and I've got good neighbors, but if my neighbor chooses to not mow, it's gonna be okay with me. If he chooses to put his car on blocks, it's got to be okay with me. I don't like that. No, 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 from my standpoint. That, that's where you can come in on public health. So if I can't public health it out there because of the stench? You can ask that question.
Yeah, that's a different, that's a different question. So.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't understand the criminal enforcement issue.
So, so I think that, I think, I think.
There's a law that says noise and, and you're telling me that the prosecutor won't follow the letter of the law?
Uh.
I mean, unless there's something in writing that says live, livestock.
Uh, I, I will tell, I will tell you that I think what the sheriff has said is entirely accurate. He can, he can, a deputy can go out there and ticket these folks. I don't think you can actually arrest them for it. I'm not sure it rises to that level, but he can ticket them. But in the end, only the prosecutor can file a charge and do anything with it.
And I don't think they're ready for anything other than.
And the pros.
You go out there and say, hey, fella, this is really kinda unacceptable in this area. You need to shut the rooster up or get rid of it.
But the, the problem is if the, if the prosecutor will not enforce it, then what we're doing basically, I mean, I don't know, I don't wanna speak for Greg. I don't have a problem with somebody going out and telling him, hey, stop it. But the ability to force them to stop it absent the prosecutor agreeing is effectively zero.
Okay, you still give them a ticket.
The smell, the smell is a different issue. The smell is a different issue because that gets into nuisance. And if there's a noxious smell, and particularly if it's coming from waste, chicken waste, that's, chicken waste in and of itself, I think, is by definition a health hazard.
I mean, the guy lives right behind you. He's got five dogs. We've never smelled. I mean, he cleans it up. Better meet him than me. We've never smelled it. I mean, he cleans it up. Better meet him than me. He cleans his yard up every couple of days. He's out there with a little shovel. It'd be easier for me to get rid of the dogs, but I've never smelled it. It hasn't been until those chickens showed up that we've started smelling. And I mean, it's to the point where you can't open the windows in our house and let fresh air in without getting the smell. When I first married my wife, I moved her to Mexico, Missouri, unknowing that over the hill there was an industrial chicken farm. She loved me for bringing her from New York City to Mexico, Missouri, and moving her miles over to a chicken farm. Well, now we've got that same smell, obviously not nearly as strong, but it's still offensive when I go out in my backyard.
And it may be worse with the neighbor with the pot-bellied pigs. But that would be the same issue, we're back to the public health issue. Christie, I'm not trying to throw you...
No, that's okay. And just because something smells that doesn't mean it's necessarily bad for you to smell it and breathe it into your body. But if the waste, yeah, health-wise, but if the waste is getting onto your property and it's becoming an issue, we can try to do something about that, and I can send my code enforcement staff out to look at that. You can hear it.
Why can't we just write him a ticket for the noise issue? Even if he's not gonna prosecute it, number one, we write speeding tickets all the time. They don't always get prosecuted.
When we had been told that there will be no prosecution on that...
Put it on his plate.
Then we know, and what it will do is, well, it will empower the neighbor.
He's already empowered right now. He's already sticking his tongue out at the neighbor going, come get me, do what you're gonna do. I know what I would do. There'd be someone with a BB gun involved and a really quiet one.
I'm not confident...
If they want liberty and freedom, I'm gonna have it too.
Well, in research of chickens and stuff, you can scare them to death with loud noises, and the Fourth of July is coming up. I don't want to do that. I mean, honestly, I don't...
The neighborhood may do it automatically.
Yeah, no, that neighborhood, yeah, there will be fireworks up there.
Not in a metal trash can a couple of feet on the other side of that fence.
Good.
Lucky way he thinks.
I'm coming here asking for help. The problem, the problem is, and I understand, I understand the issue. It's just like, I really don't like other people's dogs coming in my yard and taking care of their bathroom business. But you know, they do it, and there's no leash law that affects us. There is for you all, but there's not for us. And so I just, I'd be a good neighbor, don't let my dog do that to other people. But other people aren't necessarily good neighbors about that.
And I agree with that. Where I kind of make that distinction is I've got a neighbor's dog that comes over and uses my fertilized lawn as a bathroom, too. Because it's a lot nicer than his. How it feels good on the dog's feet, but it's a pet. I mean, I can't, I can't wrap my head around a chicken or a rooster being a pet to where it deserves the same protection that I would hope that my dog would get or that my neighbor's dog would get.
And it's not necessarily the argument about pets, though there are people who have had chickens. There are people who have had goats, and there's people, and honestly, I've seen goats in houses. We respond to a lot of calls and a lot of strange places. And I'm gonna tell you, one of them, when I went into the house and found five goats, I thought he had a dirt floor, but it wasn't a dirt floor. That one was not in the mischief station. Christie's been... People astound me, but I better be able to do prosecution. And if I can't get prosecution, it's no big... I suggested, did you get the number I suggested you invite the prosecutor?
Yeah, mhm. Well, I didn't invite him because I didn't figure he'd come, so...
Should I go talk to him?
But Greg, I, so I got some questions. So I got a call from Mr. Hill, and he said that he's been out there and had to break up some confrontations, which is...
Somebody ends up doing something that is violent or threatening, and they end up going to jail. That's what will happen.
Right.
Just, the problem is, is it's such an emotional thing, and we have to weigh it without the emotion.
So here's, here's my problem, and I'm kind of in the same boat with Jeff, is that the guy's violating the law and...
Not necessarily.
Well...
There's also some court history that says that chickens don't apply if they're in an area where they're allowed.
Well...
There's also a court history that says under that customarily incidental for accessory structures that they shouldn't do detriment to the neighborhood. And that is doing detriment to our neighborhood.
Right, but that's not a criminal offense, and I'm bound by the criminal side. I can't enforce the civil side. But zoning, when you're bringing...
We don't have zoning. That's gonna be on the ballot in August, unfortunately. I mean, that's, that's the situation we have, is we do not have zoning and never had zoning in Cole County. Zoning, we're gonna put on the ballot in November, or in August, sorry, in August.
Just for what? Is it just inside the city limits is what?
I don't know what document you're looking at, and I apologize for that.
It's a draft, January fourteen, two thousand fourteen.
Right. That's, that's the draft that will be on the ballot for approval in August.
And then the other thing I was looking at was the Rules for Land Subdivision Development Construction, Cole County, Missouri, nineteen ninety-nine.
Yeah, no, that's the planning code, which deals with when you build.
So, I mean, in here...
And we do have plan, we have had planning for a long time. So if you want to build a subdivision, you buy forty acres of land, you want to build a subdivision, there are requirements that you have to go through on a county basis with roads, you know. That document lays that out.
And it means accessory structures versus an agricultural building. I mean, so there's nothing that you can do to enforce this either?
The planning code is not a document that you can enforce retroactively. It's a, it's a document that before you build something, we have the ability to do some enforcement.
And once it's built, this document no longer applies?
That's why, that's why you need zoning on top of it, because zoning is what you get afterwards.
I mean, I guess I go back to...
And that's why we decided to move forward with that. We had a lot of folks from all over the county. I don't know how long you've been here. If you've been here long enough, probably know about this strip club, adult entertainment shop that was moved in the neighborhood, in a residential neighborhood, a number of years ago. And there's nothing we could do about it, even though it was next to three daycares and...
Well, it's gone now. Somebody done something like that because prostitution reasons hit, and we were able to interfere over that issue.
Yeah, but in the end, that's what...
So if I tell you he's trying to sell me that chicken? I think it's still legal to sell the chicken, but I need to offer to buy it, pride it up. I don't know.
Look, I offered, I have found a friend of mine that's got five, six acres over a whole summit that said, eat, take it. Again, you know, I mean, I've told him about the collar for chicks. There's just, he's just being unreasonable. And it kind of comes back to one of the things that Lieutenant Hill and I talked about was, at some point, the good of the neighborhood needs to outweigh one person. I don't disagree with that at all. And I would suggest you go upstairs and make an appointment with the prosecutor. Because we're, we're good to go if we have the support on it. We have not had the support on that, and I've been still waiting on the issue, on the answer on the pig issue.
I guess I still struggle with why we can't issue him a summons and if prosecutor doesn't...
I explained that. It just, it doesn't, the courts don't like that either.
You know what? That's not our problem. We gotta give him some kind of answer, and this is, if it was my neighbor, you ought to be getting called out there for other reasons.
So Greg, so, so this is, this is a rooster, and so, that's fine. But if I go out on my back porch in Westview Heights and I fire a shotgun all night long, is that not the same thing?
No, it's not the same thing.
Why not?
I don't know how to explain to you that's not the same thing.
I'm in the county. I can shoot a gun out there.
A rooster is not cognitively sensitive human being. Now, if the rooster's firing a shotgun, we'll deal with that.
He's annoying.
That would be really interesting, but...
But the man that owns the rooster is cognitive. I understand what you're saying. Rooster's crow. We had a lady that came in about three weeks ago, and she says, the bark, bark, bark doesn't bother me. The crow, crow, crow doesn't bother me, but the bah does. And that's a quote. And we sit there going, what? And the goat bothers her. But the rooster doesn't bother her, and the dogs don't bother her, and this is a different location. And we're in the same, we're in the same position. You can have goats. My hope on the pigs is that the pig issue, my hope is, is that he will find that it's a hog operation. It's a hog operation to your agriculture. We can entertain. And I, and I'm just sharing with you that it's not always in the courts. Sometimes you win, sometimes you lose. I can attest, right? I can tell you that the courts interpret the law regardless of what you would like it to be. My hope is that you'll go upstairs, make an appointment, and visit with him about it, and see if he can win his heart on it. And then we'll be out there and harp on it.
Well, that'd be my next stop. I mean, because I agree that something has to be, and it's just not fair that...
I think it's ridiculous that we can't do anything about it, even the barking dogs thing.
It's a gap that falls, it's a gap. And part of the issue, and I try, I don't mean it in that way, but part of the issue living outside the city limits is there are a lot more gaps than there are inside the city limits. Because the city has gone through and more, much more comprehensively addressed every single issue, because I'm sure that, I don't know, in the thirties, they had the rooster issue. So they fixed it their way.
And I understand now, I really do, that there's some things, like the dogs running around the neighborhood. I didn't realize there was a leash law out there. I've never given much thought when I see dogs running around or using my front yard as a bathroom. It is what it is. But they're not waking me up, and they're not disturbing me, and I don't think that they're adversely going to affect my property value, which, when you start getting into my pocket, I start getting a little upset. And again, I don't honestly think at this point, if I have to do a for-sale sign in my front yard, that the average person's gonna walk around and smell that and go, what is that? Well, by law, you can't lie to them. You gotta tell them. Oh, the tattooed freak over there's got chickens.
Well, Christie, will you send Mike out, take a look at this, get together with Christie, she's our Health Department Director. We can do it from that angle and take a look at it. If you would, I do suggest you go up and you talk to the prosecutor's office and see if he will make an appointment with you and discuss this. And I would invite you, either way you get from the prosecutor to come back and let us know publicly, because I think everybody would have an appreciation to know what the prosecutor feels about that, because it is a situation that we're a little hamstrung on. I think maybe we have a little bit of wiggle room, but, and with all due respect to the sheriff, he's an independent elected official. We cannot instruct him to do anything. The prosecutor's an independent elected official. We cannot instruct him to do anything. So, you know, we can be a public forum, and to the extent we have authority, we will do what we can do. So we'll get, we'll get Mike out there. Is he in town today? We'll get Mike out there today, even if you'd like. And if you want to meet him out there and show him, I know you're working, but...
You know, I'll be honest, it ain't a good idea for me to get around to him again. Because if he pops off to me one more time, I'm gonna give him a lesson in manners, and then you and I will be talking about something that I don't need.
Then the prosecutor will get interested.
Well, you know, I come home after this last appointment with a little PTSD, and he had bad mouthed me the other day. It was, had he not had his son standing behind him, things probably would have gotten ugly in a hurry, so I'll just stay away from him.
This was my point exactly. It's gonna go from a rooster to a physical disturbance or something worse.
That's a different...
Yeah, but...
And I'm sorry, as much as it would be nice to solve all the problems, we can't necessarily do that.
But you said the judges are gonna be ones to make that decision. Courts make the decision.
It doesn't get there till the prosecutor gets it there.
Give him a summons and let the prosecutor stop it there so we can talk to the prosecutor.
We've done this on, we've done this on...
Well, I'd just like to try to do something.
I don't know. I think it's, that's all I gotta say.
I still don't see the difference. I mean, if Mr. Irwin is coon hunting in his backyard, shooting a gun all hours of the night, he's legal to do so.
If you're riding a dirt bike out there.
If his dog barking in the back door.
It's a dog or a donkey.
I'm just saying, I mean, you know, you're disturbing the peace, you're disturbing the... Thank you very much, and I do encourage you to come back because, you know, we, we have limited, we have limited authority, but we at least have a public area to talk about it.
Sir, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sergeant.
Thanks.
All right, next item on the agenda is nurse practitioner's contract.
As you know, we have one nurse practitioner that works twice a week. She's gonna be gone in June for our vacation, so we're gonna have to come in and fill in for her, pay them at the same rate as we pay Maggie.
Okay.
One works for Dr. Kaywood's office now, and one works part-time for Columbia Business.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the independent contractor contracts for nurse practitioners.
So moved.
Second, I do got a question, though.
All right.
Are they, how many hours a week are they gonna be working? Six to eight. Oh, okay.
Maggie only works eight hours now, and one lady's driving now from Overly, so we're gonna try to have her do one day a week instead of two. We just don't want to turn people away who need the services.
Okay, good enough. That's all I got.
Okay, I have a motion second. Call roll, please. Yes?
Yes.
Yes. You want me to sign where it says Director of CCHD? And then make sure she gets it, and then the auditor also. Thank you very much. Assessors' proposed salary changes. Chris? It's not any change. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me do that one. One really quick, we got a really super fast one. My bad, Chris, I apologize. Public health emergency preparedness contract. Just need to approve the contract.
Yeah, it's a second, well, it's a...
So moved.
Second. Call roll. Right here, got it.
Yes.
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 Quit talking, Christie.
Run. Have a nice one. Thank you very much.
And I will make mention, I put this as closed session and open, so if there's any names we need...
Yeah, just if we were talking about it from a general level, it's open, and if we get into any individual person, we would go into closed. So, I don't know if you, me, Debbie, but we received the pay forms that you submitted for substantive pay increases. I can't recall what the spread was, but, I don't know, fifteen percent, give or take, something like that on some of them.
It was different on every employee.
Right. And I understand that that money comes because you had some unfilled positions earlier this year. I guess you're now filling.
Then I'm gonna be hiring two additional assessment clerks, and I still have to hire a general certified.
Okay. So how many vacancies do you have right now?
Really not sure to tell you the truth.
I have two.
Two vacancies? Okay. So you got two, two positions to hire still.
So I'll be putting a third position on eventually.
I mean, I assume that...
I will need a third position.
Yeah, going through the budget process, you'll want to request a third position. Okay. And the reason we wanted to have this on the, on the agenda is because, obviously, you have sufficient funds in your budget to do this for this year. If you fill those other positions, you will not have sufficient funds for next year to maintain these positions.
If the salary stays, salary budget stays the same.
Correct, okay. And, and, I mean, we understand as a matter of law, we're pretty much hamstrung. We don't have a choice. We kind of have to let you spend your salary money as you dictate with, with respect to salaries. But we want to make sure it's very clear and everybody understands that that's not a commitment to retaining them for next year, and that if the budget's not adjusted next year, their salaries will go back, or you'll have to reduce positions or something. I don't know how you would have to adjust your salary.
Same conversation we had last time.
But then last time, we got some heat because they did go back to the original pay, and it was all placed on our head.
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
There were some of them that weren't happy because their pay went back.
The last time we discussed this was about the deputy assessor, and that would have been in August. So I think the conversation you're talking about is about four or five years old.
I know, and that's why I don't want to get into the same thing.
But it wasn't the last time, Jeff.
Okay.
The last time was something completely different.
No, the one with the deputy assessor wasn't exactly the same. So the last time we talked about this exact thing, same thing, was the same. So if we want to get into semantics about it, we can do that, but I'm not signing. I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm not signing. We got in trouble with this last time. I didn't assign it the last time. I'm not doing it. I think it's bad practice.
Bad practice to pay people what they actually earn, or what they should be making?
No, it's a bad practice to take the money from unfilled positions that you actually need, and you're gonna give these people raises. It's not that you're gonna take a position and distribute those duties to the other employees and say, look, guys, I'm gonna save the county's money. I'm gonna save a little bit of money here, because I'm not gonna hire another person. I'm gonna add some duties, but I'm gonna pay them for those duties. That's a whole different ballgame there.
Three-quarters of those people that are getting raises are taking on additional duties. I can't help it that my office has to have a certain level of professionalism and skill to run those positions. And to hire those people or to retain those people, I have to pay them a certain amount of money.
So it's not the same in other offices?
Now, now, I'll tell you what, if you want to start talking that way, since May, I've lost over sixty-five years... since May, I've lost over sixty-five years of experience from my office.
I didn't say anything about that.
And the biggest part of it has been because of the county commission. I've talked to the people, okay? I've talked to the people. The people work for me. I didn't ask you for a comment. I did-
Hey, Chris, you will not talk to our folks that way. I've asked her to not hear-
She does not need a comment.
I asked her not to interrupt, okay? But you will not talk to her that way.
No, you laughed.
No, I told her to stop. I laughed at your comment, 'cause it's a joke. Go ahead with your point.
No, it's not a joke, Mark. The joke is that you expect me to maintain a top-notch assessor's office when you won't pay people what they should be paid, when you won't provide equipment that needs to be provided for. And I'm not gonna get into all that. I've got stacks and stacks of emails from, you know, this has been going on for almost seven years now. So you guys do-
I have no idea. I'll be honest with you, Chris. You and I have had a lot of disputes on the personnel side, not any doubt about that. We've kinda banged heads on it ever since you've come up here.
Absolutely.
As far as equipment goes, I will tell you that I do not recall anything that was critical to the function of the assessor's office. Software systems, computer systems, that have ever been denied. Some things have taken a little longer to get done because we have to bridge between other software, and that's been an issue, but we worked through that. I mean, if you've got a computer system that needs a new server because it can't handle the old server, you should be telling us that.
Okay. Have I sent bills up to the finance department that have been refused?
Yeah, for all sorts of things. Had nothing to do with business-related expenses. I agree.
Really? Nothing to do with business, nothing to do with training that my people are required to have?
Where did the equipment discussion?
I did, I did say equipment first.
So what equipment? What equipment? Tell me what equipment?
I don't know off the top-
So there wasn't any?
I've got a, no, I didn't say that, Mark.
Then document it or back off of it.
Okay. I'll back off of that one, okay?
Training.
Training issues. Regular bills for the office for regular items.
Such as?
I didn't bring that information with me. Now, if you'd like, I can put it all together and take all those emails that we've traded back and forth and bring those up too.
Absolutely. I encourage you to put all that stuff together because-
So what are you guys gonna do about the raises? You're either gonna approve them or not. I already know he's not going to, so what are you two gonna do? I mean, this has been the same thing for over seven years. You gave a nice little speech a couple of weeks ago about how wonderful county employees were and how we should be taking care of them. And that's not happening.
And readjusting, you know, I will tell you what Larry Vincent proposed to do a couple of years ago was a genius move and I'm still very unhappy about it. Eliminate a couple of positions, spread the duties, spread the salary.
I'm good with that. I would sign those forms. Jeff would sign those forms, no offense intended. Chris would sign it. We'll sign those forms in a heartbeat. What we don't wanna do is take five months' worth of salary that you accrue up, spread it out over people for seven months, and then have to turn around in January and make a decision of, we either dramatically increase a budget or we tell people they have to have a pay cut. The reality of it is, as a matter of law, and I don't like it, but as a matter of law, and that's what we're confined by, if you wanna do it, you get the right to do it. That makes it wrong, but it makes it legal. If you wanna go through and have these individual folks get pay adjustments because of new and additional duties they've done, we have a general process for that. Document the additional duties. We have a big, long thing that discusses every job description. Document the additional duties. And by the way, just to be clear, more work is not a different duty. If you have somebody who's a filing clerk and you eliminate another filing clerk and you say, "Now you have to file twice as much stuff", that's not an additional duty. That's just more work. If you have somebody who's a filing clerk and you instruct them that they're now gonna be an appraiser and they actually have to go out in the field and do appraising, that's an additional duty. Well, look at that kinda stuff. We've done that in every office across the county and made adjustments. But just, I got a pot of money, I'm gonna spread them out to my people because I can, 'cause I have the authority to. You know, that's a really poor way of managing.
It's not because I can, it's because they deserve it. Now, the question I have for you, have you read any of those salary adjustments?
Yeah, I have.
Okay. Have you seen that there have been different jobs on there? There's one employee that went from an assessment clerk to, to a personal property manager. There's another employee that took over the commercial division and is running the commercial division now. Can I finish speaking, please?
Let me use each one, 'cause you got examples. The one that went to personal property manager, that's a different position. And we have a policy on different positions, which we were happy to implement. If you promote somebody from one position to another because you have a vacancy in a position, you promote them, then we have a policy, and I think it's either the minimum of the range for that position or a $2,000 pay raise, whichever is greater. And it's a policy, and we're good with it. We've never complained about it. If you lose your personal property manager and you need to appoint somebody into that position, that person gets either the minimum or a $2,000 raise over what they're currently getting, because it is a different position and it is a different grade. And if that's what, I don't recall the pay form complying with that policy. If it complies with that policy, I'll sign it right now. He'll sign it right now. He'll sign it right now, 'cause that's our policy. There's no dispute about that. As I recall, that pay form did not fall within that policy. It moved somebody from one position to another and gave them a much larger raise than what our policy is.
Would you have somebody email me a copy of that policy, please?
Yeah.
Also, the commercial appraiser, okay? I have one person doing commercial work now.
Good.
As opposed to having two people that had-
'Cause you lost them.
Thirty-five, forty-five, about fifty-two years' experience.
You lost them.
Now, that's right, I did.
You gotta replace them.
I did because of a poor BOE experience. That's why that position was lost, that person was lost. That's why that person left.
Not aware of any poor BOE experiences, but that's on-
I am.
Were you up here for it?
No, but I heard the results.
Ah, sorry.
When you-
Usually the assessor's here for BOE and that becomes the issue. So you would've been here, you would've known.
That's why the deputy handled it, because generally when I'm up here, we usually get treated that way. But when you accept a number from an individual who doesn't have an appraisal, compared to somebody who does have an appraisal-
So we disagree. Oh, I understand. So what you're saying is, is we're sitting on the BOE and a group of folks that are three, three elected officials and four-
Who have no knowledge of real estate, except for one of them.
And we make a decision. Their four people quit because we make-
But you're not the entire Board of Equalization.
You're right, and everybody else voted.
That's right.
So they're obviously the reason they quit. Should we need to call the Board of Equalization and tell them that they shouldn't make our people quit?
No, Mark, I'm not gonna waste any more work.
Come on, Chris, that's a stupid comment and you know it.
Stupid?
That was a stupid comment. She quit because the Board of Equalization voted against her on one issue.
Because she's tired of you changing whatever you want and saying, "We can change this one number in this appraisal and it'll read this, so then we can go with that."
Isn't that our job as a BOE?
That's not how appraisal works, Mark.
Isn't that how the job of the BOE?
There's a lot of the ways certain appraisals work. They're very subjective to certain numbers that can be manipulated.
Are you an appraiser?
Probably more qualified than you, Chris.
Really? You think so?
I've been in the real estate industry for a while and I've sat and done plenty of broker opinions.
Broker opinion is not an appraisal.
You know what? It is on a minor level, so I understand where you get to the numbers and when you have a business number.
I'm not gonna waste any more time. You guys do what you want with your raises. You've always done that in the past. You'll continue to do it sooner or later.
You sit here and throw stones, then you're gonna pick a ball to go home.
Sooner or later, the courts will say what's supposed to be done.
You're gonna appeal it again?
All right. That addresses that issue. We'll move on to the next issue.
And again?
Well, you know, you wanna go back to that one. You got a ruling from a judge-
I don't care, I'll start right now.
And a week later, I got a ruling in my favor from that same judge. And I've got the paperwork on it.
All right. We'll move on to the next item. The next item's a real short one. Approval of CMPS site survey. I don't have the piece of paper yet, but we'll have it very shortly. They have to do some engineering work on the old jail sheriff's house to set corners, et cetera. And we just need to get approval to retain CMPS. It's five thousand dollars. They're gonna bring, yeah, it's a professional service. What? Sheriff's House and Jail, yeah.
So are we gonna just pin that till we have the-
I would just vote to approve it.
Approve the site, okay.
And then, well, get the contract, we can sign it. That way we don't slow down. So I entertain a motion to approve this, retaining CMPS to do a site survey on the sheriff's house, jail, courthouse for future construction.
So moved.
Second. And it is a professional service, so we don't have to-
It is a professional service.
Okay.
All right. Call roll, please. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
A roll call, that's approved. That addresses everything that I see on the agenda. Does anybody else have anything for the agenda? Yes, Betty?
Can you go show me the inside of the sheriff's house? We've asked for some signs. We all wanted to go over there.
Well, Greg can take you up there.
No, Greg's not here this week, but-
Well, no, he's not here this week, but he's back there.
Greg is here now?
Yes, just talk, we will get, hey Greg? Chelsea's Greg out there? Yeah? Did you get ahold of him? So let's, yeah, will you guys work together and arrange to arrive at? Thank you very much, John. Oh, and I also- I also received a request for, I guess there's a plaque on the side of the sheriff's house. And somebody who's related to somebody who's on the plaque asked if they could have that. I think we oughta wait, figure out what we wanna do with the plaque before we make any promises to give it to anybody.
Yeah, we might be able to reincorporate it.
That's what I was thinking, is we could reincorporate it.
It's by the big door, I think, yeah.
Anything else?
And I'm sorry I interrupted, but I don't like the people saying bad things about you guys, and it's not true.
Don't defend us, we will defend ourselves. You have in front of you the-
Twenty-four seven, if you was trying to defend them.
You have in front of you the 2015 Budget Calendar and Process. I think we already walked through all these dates, as I recall.
Our budget's due the fifteenth.
Yes.
And you don't have us on schedule till the eighteenth.
That's the Saturday anyway.
Okay, so can I just make-
We would prefer to do it before the fifteenth, just so we're in compliance with the statute.
But Mark, you're gone the first two weeks, so-
I'll be back, um, that Friday, whatever that is.
Well, when you turn it in, you're just handing it over and that's all it is.
Yeah, all you have to do is turn it in.
So we can do that without Mark here, right?
I'm really the least, I mean, I hate to say it, I'm the least important person, because I don't vote on the budget this year.
If we could do it before the fifteenth, that would be great, just so we're in compliance with what we're supposed to do.
Pick a date that works for you guys. If I'm not here, it's really no big deal.
Make a note on there that Mark is out of town and, you know, keep a limited agenda. If, you know, if Mark's fine with us taking care of some other business while he's gone, then we can knock some stuff out. We don't have to not have a meeting for two weeks.
I agree.
We still need to be able to get stuff done and you do have some schedule.
What day are we talking about? Any certain day?
You can do it November fourteenth. I'm here the fourteenth.
No, you gotta before August fifteenth, before August fifteenth, all right?
What do we have on November fourteenth?
It's the seventh.
No, it's not. It's a Friday.
Fourteenth.
The fourteenth. What do we have on the fourteenth?
You don't have any, but I'm just trying to save you a little time here. The thirteenth, you have an agenda.
We have an agenda set on the thirteenth.
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
I'm gone that day, it won't matter. I might be here. I might not be here. I don't know.
We gotta do something before the fifteenth?
The fifteenth is our deadline by statute that we're supposed to hand it to you.
Put it on the thirteenth. Put it on thirteen. I anticipate that I will be here on the thirteenth. I'm supposed to be back the twelfth. Airplanes being airplanes. If I'm not, I'm not-
I mean, I'm probably doing the fourteenth too. I just, we would prefer to do it before the fifteenth so that we're compliant with what we're supposed to do.
You guys will get thirteen?
Yeah, are you gonna give us the spiel when you present it to us, or what?
Yeah, we don't do much of a spiel anymore, but we will give you.
You get to do your own spiel this time, huh?
We'll see.
I was looking at the wrong date. It must've been in August, November, November.
Goodbye, man.
We'll say November, boy.
Thank you.
Thirteen?
What? You're good. Thirteenth.
Kristen? Are you, are you gonna need to sign these as well?
Yes, I am.
Before they go to the clerks?
I need to file them, we're on meetings.
It doesn't matter what order we necessarily do it in.
Personnel, yeah.
So I'll sign them and you have to sign or initial, or what?
I need to sign.